Here's another, I guess, little bit of misconception even with the province. That we don't really have a season for ticks anymore. They can be active all year, anytime the temperatures are above four degrees Celsius. And many cases even lower if it's a sunny day and you've got nice little microclimates happening here and there. They can be active any month of the year now, especially since, you know, even in December, January, February, you might have days that are over four. And I mean, you're just looking at the temperatures this week, double digits. So they're absolutely active now. So it's not, although May is generally considered Lyme disease awareness month, they are now active throughout the year. Next slide. So as I said, prevention is the biggest thing. And one of the reasons why I've reached out to municipal units is that I think that all levels of government have a play in ticks, tick prevention and getting the word out. The province last year constructed signage for all of the provincial parks and they will be put up and kept up all year. What I would love to see is that any municipal parks and properties also signed to advise that ticks may be present and to undertake preventative measures. And I would also love to see, you know, more social media going on about ticks and tick prevention all throughout the year. The province generally puts a little bit out in May, but it really needs to be, like I said, a municipal, municipal units also need to have some say in this and help get their constituents aware and undertaking preventative measures. Next slide. So as I said, there's all kinds of different things you can do for prevention. It's in some cases, it's a personal measure. If you don't want to look kind of silly with your long pants tucked into your socks and all that, there are other things you can do. But the biggest thing, I guess, would be the tick checks, showering shortly after being outside and just being aware that ticks can be basically anywhere these days. Next slide. So there are things you can do as well once you get home. One of the big things is if you have been in a high-risk tick area, throw your clothes immediately into the dryer for 15 or 20 minutes and that should kill the ticks. Putting them in the washing machine, they just go for a little swim, doesn't kill them, they're fine. But the hot dryer will dry them out. That's why you generally don't see them when it's super dry and hot in the summer. They prefer moist shady areas, but when it's really, really hot out and really, really dry, they usually not that active. Next slide. Again, there's a lot of different things you can use. I personally prefer the high-active or the less dangerous. I'm not a big deep fan, but there are a lot of things that you can use that are a little bit less overall chemical-based and a little less dangerous. A lot of it is smell-based. And so the Atlantic product that is made right here in Nova Scotia is more of a smell-based. So you do have to frequently put that on to make sure that that smell is there. Next slide. Tick checks, as I said, the ticks do like on the body, warm moist areas. Some of those areas you don't generally look at too much, but that's some of the areas that they do prefer. And they also like, you know, anywhere there might be a little bit of moisture from your sweat, you know, bands on your pants. For women, the bra straps, anywhere that might be a good little moist hiding place they love. Next slide. Hopefully you all know the basics about removal of ticks. You don't want to squeeze the body. You want to pull it straight up. Don't swirl it around. Don't cover it with anything. Ignore all of the awful things that go around on social media, usually in May, about smothering it and whatnot. Do it the proper way. Next slide. Little bit more. Next slide. What I do recommend, if you do find a tick, especially if it's engorged on yourself or a pet, the only place at the moment that is doing tick testing is a private lab genetics. So there is a fee for that. But I do suggest that it's helpful to have your tick tested and that way you know if it was carrying anything. It does give you peace of mind. Or you can just put it in a bag in the freezer. And if you do start to have symptoms, getting it tested is not a bad thing again because it could be carrying a number of things. Next slide. There's just a little bit more about the transmission time. It's not as long as it is suggested in many places. It can be as little as 15 minutes. Next slide. Just going to quickly say, I only have 10 minutes, I think, for a presentation. So I'm going to go fast. But the Lyme rash is one thing that is very, very often confused is that the Lyme rash is actually called an erythema migrans rash. The bullseye version, which you see in this picture, is seen in only a small percentage of cases, under 20% of the cases. So there are other rashes that are much more common. The erythema migrans is actually a rash that will start fairly small and then grow over time and can become quite big. And that is a definitive sign of an erythema migrans rash is that it grows and grows and grows over a few days. And that is indicative of Lyme disease. Next slide. So the CDC recently came out last year, I believe, with this new poster about the various types of rashes that are possible. On dark skin, it can be very hard to see. So it's, it's something you really have to be aware of. Next slide. So I'm not going to get too much into this because this is kind of a little gritty gritty and I'm looking that we're getting close to my time and then we'll be a Q and A. So as I said, the testing, or I guess I didn't say, but one thing I will say is that the testing that is available to us here in Nova Scotia and in Canada right now is not 100% accurate. There are reasons for a potential false negative test. So if a test comes back negative and you still have all of the symptoms or dealing with different symptoms, it may still be that you have Lyme or another tick-borne disease. Next slide. So again, it's like always take precautions. The big thing is prevention. We have difficulty getting, realizing that we're bitten. We have difficulty getting diagnosed. So the prevention is the thing that we really, really, really need to work on. And to do that, we have to make sure that the constituents of residents of Nova Scotia are aware that ticks are active and that they must be undertaking preventative measures. Next slide. So I just threw this in here because a lot of people don't really understand or are aware that ticks have been in this province for a very long time. They've been found to be carrying disease for a very long time and that a lot of people have gone undiagnosed and misdiagnosed. So we're dealing with a lot of long-term health issues with people that are actually dealing with Lyme and tick-borne diseases. So we need to prevent that from happening. Next slide. So I have a lot of additional information here. Again, as I said, this is for something for you guys to look at when you have an opportunity. There's a lot of links, a lot of information available. As I started the Nova Scotia Lyme Support Group back in 2014 and the advocacy group a few years ago, and I constantly are being contacted by people dealing with this issue. And we just, there's a lot of information out there. It's kind of difficult to find unless you're absolutely looking for it. And it's kind of muted as far as what's available as reminders to the public that this is something that they should be aware of. Next slide. So we basically have a few slides of additional information for anybody. There's eTick genetics, the annual notifiable diseases surveillance report. As I said, there's three new tick-borne diseases on that. Next slide. And we have, I don't know if you're aware of that, in 2019, there was a conference in Bridgewater that brought a few people in to talk about Lyme and tick-borne diseases. So there are videos of many of those presentations available on YouTube as well. There is an excellent video done by the Lunenburg Doc Fest seniors in Lunenburg that is excellent to watch. And as I said, it's from people in the Lunenburg area that have dealt with Lyme and tick-borne diseases. And there's some prevention videos that have been put together for children and for adults, which are easy to share if you guys are up for that. Next slide. So again, there's just a few little things, questionnaires people can do to see if they might be dealing with Lyme and tick-borne diseases. And the general symptom questionnaire is for healthcare professionals where we don't have a lot of time for healthcare professionals to, to look at, look at you when you're there. It's usually one symptom, two systems, very short. That really helps them figure out if you're dealing with Lyme or tick-borne diseases. Next slide. Little bit more info. Next slide. More info, lots of info. There's lots of info out there. So that is basically it for what I was going to do. You know, the ticks are active all year. There's more than just ticks and black-legged ticks that are carrying disease and we really need municipalities to kind of also help in getting the awareness out there. Next slide. I guess that must be the last one. So that is it for me. So I guess we have a Q and A time. If anybody has any questions, I'm sorry I went through so fast, but I really generally do this presentation in about a half an hour. And so with the shorter times then, I was trying to get some key points out there.
Well, we certainly appreciate you condensing it for us, but the information will be available to us, to peruse at our own time. And I'm not sure if there's any questions. Counselor Granger has a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thanks for your presentation. Just wanted to ask if there was tick testing available in Nova Scotia right now? I got tested and this was a while ago, but I was told that there was no actual Lyme disease testing in Nova Scotia. It had to be sent out west.
The Lyme disease testing is actually now, for Lyme disease itself in humans, is done at, in Halifax now. They have changed, I think, three years ago, they went from doing an ELISA in Halifax and then sending the blood out to Winnipeg to do Western Blot. They have now changed to do two different types of ELISA testing in Halifax, which is quicker, you get a quicker response time. But again, there are the chance of false negatives. Testing the ticks, there's nothing being done in Nova Scotia as far as tick testing that I'm aware of. I mean, some of the, I think Acadia does a little bit, but it's not, people aren't submitting their ticks to them for testing. Right now, the only testing of ticks is privately done through genetics, which is unfortunate because it's not that cheap. But as I said, it can give you peace of mind. It's not a diagnostic tool, but it'll give you an idea of what the tick may or may not be carrying. And then if there are symptoms, it's a little easier to deal with.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Granger. We've got Counselor Davison.
Thank you, through you, Chair. Thanks for your presentation. Tick information is extremely important in Nova Scotia. Just a quick question. We do know that Lyme is normally typically transferred into the system like 24 hours after a tick has inserted themselves. So with these other new viruses, are they treated with antibiotics or are they more of a viral thing that your body takes care of on its own?
So there's a mixture. The B.Ciosis requires a different treatment protocol than Lyme. Powassan virus doesn't have a treatment. And the Anaplasmosis is the same treatment, I think, as Lyme. So there's, there's a little bit of a variety going on. So some are bacteria, some are viruses. There's, it's, yeah, it differs. And especially there's, there's a few others that have been found in the province that have not made the notifiable diseases report yet that also might take some, a different type of antibiotic or a different type of treatment. So it's, it is a kind of a, it can be an issue.
Just kind of follow up. Just a follow-up question. So when do people, do you normally, if you think you might have symptoms after a tick bite, would they, is that more of a blood work type thing to do or is it, isn't more symptomatic based?
It's, actually Lyme is supposed to be a diagnosis based on your symptoms. The testing is supposed to be supplemental because they are aware that the tests are not 100% accurate. It depends on your symptoms. I mean, if you have the erythema migrans rash, no testing is required. You should be treated, you know, immediately. The quicker you're treated, the better. If there's other ones that could indicate Lyme that are visible, facial palsy can be a Lyme symptom and that, you know, the drooping of the side of the face can actually be a Lyme symptom. And swelling of the knees would be a little bit later stage Lyme symptom. But that could also be something. So it depends on the symptoms that you're looking at. If they're, if they're more like, if it's fatigue and maybe neck pain, things that you can feel, but the doctors can't see, they will generally test. If you test too early, it will probably be negative because it takes usually, you know, three to six weeks sometimes for antibodies to build, if they build at all. So, and it's an antibody test. So it's, it's supposed to be based on symptoms and knowledge of the doctors, but we are still somewhat limited in that knowledge, unfortunately, in the healthcare, in the healthcare field for some doctors.
All right. Thanks, great information.
Thank you, Counselor Davison. Counselor Hurdle.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I'm a fan of the Thermacell products that are great for preventing mosquito bites and you don't have to apply it to your skin. Is there something similar product-wise that's good for tick bite prevention that you're aware of or in development?
Occasionally I've seen a couple of things that basically, you know, wearable devices that, that are supposed to be helpful and different things like that. But to my knowledge, it's not as effective as it would be for mosquitoes and whatnot. I think really for ticks, we're still looking at either, you know, sprays or the general, you know, looking for the ticks and showering and whatnot. That the, there really hasn't been anything developed that works well. And my concern is that people get a false sense of security with some of these things that, and then maybe don't undertake all of the other precautions. So I'm a little leery about some of these. But yeah, there's nothing that I would say right now is a very good tool.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hurdle. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious if you have a pet dog or cat and are the symptoms the same with pets as humans?
Well, sort of in a weird way because, I mean, humans can have the Lyme arthritis. So lameness is, is something a dog may have. But there, there's, that's probably one of the quickest ones you would see is if your dog is suffering some lameness. Cats, weirdly, don't generally get Lyme. And I think part of that is because of their grooming and picking the ticks off, which, by the way, if you have an outdoor cat and they're picking the ticks off inside, well, I don't need to say anymore that the ticks are now roaming around your house. But yeah, they, I think lameness is probably the most visible sign for dogs. So they do have some of the similar, similar symptoms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Killam.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Is this presentation or this information readily available to schools that these students could hear and spread the, the bad news about ticks?
Well, I will do presentations anywhere with anybody and schools for sure. I have kind of reached out to a few of the school nurses and through other areas to the schools to see if they could have some information available. I had provided brochures when my kids were littler to other schools so that they could hand them out. So, but to answer your point, I, except for can do this presentation, I have actually done it for some younger people. So I've altered it a little bit so it's not so scary. And as I said, the Lunenburg, Lunenburg Lyme Association, which no longer exists, but anyway, they, they did two, two tick prevention videos and one was specifically by children in a school. And it's great to, you know, for kids to watch and about tick prevention and awareness and, and, you know, in a non-scary way, just so that they know that they should be aware of it. And actually, kids are great to educate because then they will educate their parents and make their parents more aware and to undertake more preventative measures.
Thank you. That's a good way to get the word out for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Lots of all the lights on my board. Ms. Sugar, we certainly appreciate your time and coming to present to us today and we will be on the lookout. I try to avoid grass, but that's just me. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for having me.
Okay. I think, believe we have a motion, Chris, for the Committee of the Whole received the information, for information, the presentation for the Nova Scotia Lyme Support and Advocacy Group, Lyme Disease Awareness, as provided on April 16th, 2024. Do we have a mover? Counselor Allen, Counselor Granger, thank you very much. I don't think there's anybody that's against that, so you can register your vote now.
Yes.
And that's unanimously passed. Thanks very much. Onto our administration section. We have a proclamation request for Lyme Disease Awareness Month and our municipal clerk is going to bring that forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Donna Lugar, who just provided an excellent presentation, also submitted a request for a proclamation for Lyme Disease Awareness Month. This is the sixth time in recent years that the municipality has had this proclamation. And so the recommended, recommended motion is that Committee of the Whole recommend that Municipal Council proclaim May 2024 to be Lyme Disease Awareness Month in the municipality of the County of Kings.
Do we have a mover? Counselor Killam? Counselor Burgess, thank you. I'll get you to Counselor Davison, don't worry. All those in favor or otherwise?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we have some other proclamations for the month of May and they are being presented to us today by Lucy Orfori, a diversity specialist. Lucy started here with the municipality on April the 2nd and will be replacing Clarissa during her upcoming parental leave. So welcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Hi, everyone. I hope you're all doing well. I'll be presenting the May proclamations and I'm very excited to be presenting in front of the Committee of the Whole for the first time this morning. Next slide, please. So the origins of these is the Strategy for Belonging aligning with our goals in that and the COMS 02003 policy for proclamations. Next slide, please. Our intent this morning is for the Committee of the Whole to recommend the proclamation requests discussed today to Municipal Council per the COMS 02003 Proclamations Policy. Per Section 4.1, the proclamation policy, it is the policy of the council to consider requests proclaim certain causes when such proclamation positively impacts the community. In the month of May, we have two days of significance and three heritage months. May 5th is National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls, and Two-Spirit Peoples, also known as Red Dress Day. May 17th is the International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, and Transphobia. The month of May is Gaelic Nova Scotia Heritage Month, Asian Heritage Month, as well as Jewish Heritage Month. May 5th marks the National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls, and Two-Spirit Peoples, also known as Red Dress Day. The day brings awareness to the disproportionate rates that indigenous women, girls, and two-spirit peoples are harmed, murdered, or missing, as well as honoring their lives by raising awareness of those ongoing national crisis. The day also brings awareness to their families and communities living with the loss of their loved ones. Red dresses became symbolic of this crisis after Métis artist Jamie Black's Red Dress Project installation in 2010. Next slide, please. May 17th marks the International Day Against Homophobia, Transphobia, and Biphobia. It was first recognized by the Foundation Emergency in Quebec and has now gained traction worldwide. May 17th is the, is a day of significance as on May 17th, 1990, homosexuality was officially removed from the World Health Organization's list of mental disorders. Proclaiming this day is an opportunity to publicly denounce discrimination, violence, and prejudice that members of the 2S LGBTQIA+ community continue to experience for being themselves, as well as acknowledging that everyone has a right to be treated equally regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Next slide, please. The province of Nova Scotia began celebrating Gaelic, Gaelic Nova Scotia Heritage Month in May 1996, making this year the 28th anniversary. According to Gaelic Nova Scotian Affairs, Nova Scotia is a province where Gaelic culture established roots and grew for generations to survive. For a time in Nova Scotia's history, Gaelic was the third most spoken language in the province of Nova Scotia and is still home to approximately 2,000 Gaelic speakers. Due to Gaelic speakers being punished for speaking their language at schools, many families have stopped speaking the language. Today, younger generations are working to relearn Gaelic. Next slide, please. Asian Heritage Month takes place in May. The municipality of the County of Kings officially proclaimed May as Asian Heritage Month for the first time in 2023, but it has been celebrated throughout Canada since the 1990s. The month of recognition, the month of recognition is an opportunity for Canadians to learn more about the diverse cultures and history of Asian communities across the country and recognize the hundreds of years of contributions. This month is also a reminder of the persistent need to combat anti-Asian hate. Next slide, please. Jewish Heritage Month is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate Jewish Canadians and their contributions these individuals have made and continue to make in our society. The month was first recognized across the country in 2018. The month of May was selected because of its meaningfulness to the Jewish community, lining up with Shavuot, or also known as the Feast of Weeks. It is important to consider the experience of Jewish people in Canada, the presence of past and present antisemitic prejudice, as well as the distinct Jewish experience outside of the country of Israel. Next slide, please. I'd like to note that a draft of each proclamation has been included in the package as well. I'd like to note that a draft of each proclamation has been included in the package as well. There are no financial implications for this decision outside of existing budgets. The work is connected to the implementation of the Strategy for Belonging and aligns with the strong community's pillar of this strategic plan. For implementation, each proclamation will be published on the municipality's website, as well as shared on social media platforms to spread awareness. Alternatively, Municipal Council may choose not to proclaim any or all five of the proclamations. We recommend that the Committee of the Whole recommend Municipal Council proclaim May 5th, 2024, as National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women, Girls, and Two-Spirit Peoples in the municipality of the County of Kings. Second, that the Committee of the Whole recommend Municipal Council proclaim May 17th, 2024, as the International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, and Transphobia in the municipality of the County of Kings. Third, that the Committee of the Whole recommend Municipal Council proclaim May 2024 as Gaelic Nova Scotia Heritage Month in the municipality of the County of Kings. Fourth, that the Committee of the Whole recommend Municipal Council proclaim May 2024 as Asian Heritage Month in the municipality of the County of Kings. And fifth, that the Committee of the Whole recommend Municipal Council proclaim May 2024 as Jewish Heritage Month in the municipality of the County of Kings. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Lucy? Nothing? Okay. Well, we'll look forward to the mayor reading out those proclamations at our May council meeting, and I'm really looking forward to him doing the Gaelic one. So, we have a motion in front of us, which Lucy has written, read into the record. Can I have a mover, please? Councilor Davidson. Councilor Burgess, thank you very much. You can register your vote on that now.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you for your presentation. Look forward to seeing you again. There is? There's one? They were all on that motion, I think. Yep. Pay attention. So, our next item on the agenda is Financial Services, Award of Contract Number 24-03 Municipal Insurance Requirements. And we have Kristy Taylor and Katrina Rolfs with us for that.
Good morning. Katrina and I are here to present the Request for Decision for Municipal Insurance Requirements. So, on January 30th, we released an NRFP for Municipal Insurance Requirements, as we do roughly every five years. That closed on March 12th, 2024. We received two submissions for the NRFP. We utilized a company called Sigma Risk because we don't have an in-house insurance specialist. Sigma Risk is an insurance specialist who assisted us with drafting the NRFP and assisted us with the scoring and review as well to ensure that we were following all required protocols and making sure we were receiving all relevant information. With their assistance, we reviewed and scored the NRFPs, with Brokerlink receiving the highest scoring.
The financial implications of this is that the total premium for the first year will be $375,547, which is only a 1.4% increase over the prior year's insurance premium. Annual premiums may vary based on additions, deletions, claims, and market conditions, and this expense will be dispersed over several GLs throughout the operating fund. We had budgeted $397,970 for this for '24-'25. Due to the timing of the issuance of the NSRP, we didn't have the information for budget, obviously. So, this is well within the budget, and the financial implications are that it would be expensed throughout the fiscal year.
So, the recommendation is that the Committee of the Whole recommend Municipal Council award NRFP Number 24-03 Municipal Insurance Requirements to Brokerlink as described in the Request for Decision dated April 16th, 2024.
Are there any questions of clarification? Councilor Granger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. Just wondering, the 1.4% increase, is that just an annual increase that is across the board? Or what does that bring to us?
Yes, through you, Councilor Armstrong, to Councilor Granger. So, 1.4% is the increase that we're seeing over what we paid last year for insurance. It's, we aren't guaranteed a 1.4% increase every year for the next five years. This is going to vary each year based on market conditions, claims that we have, things like that. If we make additions to vehicles, deletions, things like that. So, it's going to vary over the next five years, but for next year, our starting price is $375,000, which is within the budget that we had set for '24-'25.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Killam?
Thank you, Chair. Just a question of, of, I guess I was just thinking of the changes over the years and how the insurance has increased or has maintained its cost. I'm just curious about the liability part of it and if indeed there was any effort to look at other entities that we fund, as is fire departments, to come in with one package that may help everyone? Is that, has that been considered?
So, that wasn't something considered at this time. It's something that we could potentially look at down the road. This was just specifically for municipal insurance coverage.
Okay. And could you just mention the number that we paid previously on this?
Previous to this, it was $370,000 some odd. I'd have to get the exact, but, and now we're going to pay $374,547 is their bid. And again, that can change every year based on the number of claims we have, additions, deletions, things like that.
I understand. It's pretty complex, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Killam. Are there any other questions of clarification? Councilor Granger?
Thank you. Through you. Do all municipalities have their own insurance? There isn't any, like, group bundling? Like, if Annapolis wanted to come with us? Or is that a consideration, or is that something that municipalities just don't do?
So, each individual municipality does get their own insurance. However, I do know that there is some sort of agreement or partnership or recommendation from AMANS that Brokerlink is kind of a preferred supplier. And so, we are looking further into that to see exactly what that means and that entails. They are the incumbent insurance provider as well, who we used from the previous five years. So, we're looking at other opportunities as well. If we were to possibly be able to partner with other municipalities or to maybe get even more preferred pricing, but that's just not something that we were able to do in time to be able to meet our requirements for this NRFP.
Got you. I was just kind of thinking, because Berwick, Wolfell, and Kentville are municipalities in our municipality. You know, everybody's paying insurance. It might make more fiscal sense to bundle.
It could. It also depends on the risk factor for each municipality, too. So, it could benefit us, but it could also be a deterrent as well, too, just depending on how it works. But it's definitely something to look into.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did you read the recommendation?
I did, but I can read it again.
Okay. No, that's fine. That's fine. So, the recommendation has been read into the record. Can I have a mover and a secondere, please? Councilor Allen. Councilor Burgess, thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Any debate? You can register your vote now.
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. So, we're down to the part where we ask for board and committee reports. We received none in writing, but if there's anyone that would like to bring forward verbal reports from either committees of council or external boards and committees, I can open your mic now? Nothing? Okay. That's great. So, the last, second last item on our agenda is correspondence. And just to give an overview, the letters are included in our package. We have one letter from Minister Lorr on the new Provincial Department of Emergency Management and the formation of the Nova Scotia Guard. The second is a letter from Minister Lorr, referenced the MOU Service Change Agreement between the province and the municipalities of Nova Scotia. And we do have a letter from the Wolfell Royal Canadian Legion, and it is a request for funding. So, can I have a motion to receive the correspondence, please? Councilor Burgess, Councilor Hurdle, thank you. If there's no discussion or debate on that, you can register your vote now.
Yes.
And that's passed unanimously. Is there any other business to be brought forward from the council? Nothing? Wow, we're going to get out of here before 10:00. That's great. So, comments from the public? Nobody's jumping up. Okay. So, on that note, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilor Burgess, Councilor Davidson, thank you very much. And you can register your vote on that now. We will be going into a special council meeting, a very short one with only one item, as soon as we're finished this. So, this Committee of the Whole is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Good morning, still, council and staff. I call the meeting of Special Counsel of April 16th, 2024, to order. I'm calling the meeting to order as clerk, as the mayor and deputy mayor are both away at a conference this week. The Municipal Government Act allows council to appoint a chair among the council members present. Councilor Armstrong agreed to chair the meeting today, so I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint Councilor Armstrong as chair. That's moved by Councilor Allen and seconded by Councilor Granger. So, the motion reads that Municipal Council appoint Councilor Armstrong as chair of the April 16th, 2024 Special Counsel Meeting, and you can cast your vote now.
Yes.
And that passed unanimously, and with that, I will give over the chair to Councilor Armstrong.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The clerk has called the session in, to order, and I'll ask you to register your presence on your electronic voting pad, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Harding. As in our Committee of the Whole, everyone is present with the exception of Mayor Matar and Deputy Mayor Lutz. They are away on county business, so I would like to have a motion to excuse their absence. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Davidson and Councilor Burgess, thank you. All those in favor or otherwise, you can register your vote now.
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. So, we have a very short agenda here. It's mostly pro forma, only one item. So, can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please? Councilor Granger, Councilor Burgess, thank you. All those in favor or otherwise?
Yes.
And at this point, with a one-item agenda, if you have any disclosure of conflict of interest, I'll hear them now. Nope. So, our one item today is Financial Services, the appointment of a municipal auditor. And Mr. Mike Livingstone, of Manager of Financial Reporting, is with us. And the mic is all yours.
Terrific. Thanks so much. Good morning, Committee of, or Council, I guess now. So, we're looking at appointment of the municipal auditor for the audit of fiscal '23-'24, so the financial year that just ended. And just a really brief slide and presentation today. So, details on this appointment. So, it is an annual requirement of the Municipal Government Act. We're currently at the midway point of a five-year RFP award to Grant Thornton LLP. The base audit fee for '23-'24 will be $45,000, and there'll be additional fees on top of that expected as a result of the cybersecurity incident that happened during the summer of that fiscal period. So, there'll be additional services and a fee tied to that. There's already been a discussion with, around the recommendation to appoint Grant Thornton as municipal auditor with the Audit and Finance Committee and some detailed discussion around their fee schedules and the decision to reappoint. And that conversation went fairly well. And so, with all that information, and unless there's any questions, the recommendation would be that Municipal Council appoint Grant Thornton LLP as municipal auditor for the fiscal period ended March 31st, 2024.
Thank you. Are there any questions of clarification for staff? Councilor Killam?
Thank you, Chair. Through, to you. I guess what I'm asking is, what would be the additional fee regarding that cyber incident? Do you have a number yet, or is it still in the works of being, adding up?
Through you, Chair Armstrong, to Councilor Killam. We don't have a figure for it. It'll be based on their hourly service. It's not, I mean, in a normal circumstance, it'd be fairly complicated to test a system transition in the case that we're dealing with, where we moved from basically the identical system to an identical system just with some minor differences as a result of cybersecurity. It'll be a little bit more straightforward. What I can give you is that roughly the charge-out rate for the staff that would be performing that work is around the $200 mark per hour. That's not necessarily what they'll bill out at, so it could be a little bit less than that per hour in the end. But it shouldn't be significant. It'll just be a couple, a thousand or two on top of what we've got, would be my estimate.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I do have one. Do we anticipate that we will be on schedule for having our completed financial statements from Grant Thornton at the end of September, as we normally would? Or are we looking at a difference in, you know?
Yeah, we should be on schedule. They're a little bit behind the eight ball in terms of getting started with audit planning, but that shouldn't impact the actual field work of the audit, which tends to take place around July. And then, with collecting up the information from external- around July, and then with collecting up the information from external parties, gathering all that together and doing the consolidated statements and having that prepared late August or early September, we should be able to maintain that timeline.
Good. Thank you. Are there no further questions? Okay. So the recommendation is that Municipal Council appoint Grant Thornton LLP as a municipal auditor for the fiscal period ending March 31, 2024. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor Burgess, Counselor Hurdle, thank you. And is there any discussion or debate? Nope. You can register your vote now.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Livingstone. That is unanimous. There wasn't any business in the previous meeting that ended two minutes ago, so is there any business to be brought forward to this council? Nope. Then I will, and we don't have any public. With us today is, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Counselor Allen? Counselor Killam? You can register your vote on that motion now.
Yes.
Thanks, Counselor Harding. Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. Great meeting.
We are adjourned.